Good evening. I will now call to order the August 4th, 2022 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission. And with that, Mark Atkins is going to lead us in prayer and Tim Slate will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So you'll stand, please.
That's great. Father, we come to you today just with grateful hearts, Father, for just the things that you bestow upon our lives each and every day, all the blessings that you give us. Father, we give you all the credit. But we also want to lift up those that protect all of us here in our town, our fire and police officers, Father, our employees who do a wonderful job keeping our town safe and just watching over our traffic situations and everything else. Father, especially today, we want to make mention of our teachers. As our teachers get ready to go back to school tomorrow, Father, we just pray for safety. We pray for the crossing guards, the bus drivers, the teachers, the substance, anybody that has anything to do with the school system, Father. We know it's a busy day and we just pray for smooth transition and that all the students, especially, Father, are safe getting to and from their school. Go with us now as we deliberate the business of the town. We ask your guidance. We ask your blessings upon our lives. It's these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Tim. Kevin, citizens' comments?
None at this time.
Okay. Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the July 20th, or excuse me, July 7th, 2022 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting agenda items in order?
In order to form.
Okay. Commission, have we had a chance to review? And if so, are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. Our first item is a rezoning request. This is from Rob Mulchan, 349 Cheney Road, rezoning R4 to PRD.
Yes, this is a rezoning request. You did look at it last month and did defer it one month. This is a rezoning for a portion of a parcel, about 7.37 acres that's been requested to be rezoned. Currently zoned R4 has been requested to be rezoned to a PRD. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R4, R6, and C2 in Smyrna, and C1 in Laverne, which is government use, which is a Laverne High School football field in that area there. The land use plan for this area is the Samir, the corridor character area, which would support a mix of retail and service uses with high-density residential and appropriate locations. The major thoroughfare plan does show Cheney Road as a collector, which is the road that this property fronts on. Adequate right-of-way may exist, but would be evaluated further when the site plan is submitted. Now, this request of PRD is for 67 townhomes on the 7.37 acres, a little over nine units per acre. About 2.64 acres of the parcel would remain zoned R4 and would continue in use as a church. We will have to look at those parking, the parking for the church. Some of those spaces are going, would be removed with this development, so we would have to potentially have to add some additional parking. They have adequate room to do that, though. We would have to look at that if this is approved. We did ask them to resubmit the auto turn and asked them to contact Mr. Lawrence with the Fire Department regarding that. I believe that was taken care of. I'll have to confirm that. We did defer this last month. Primarily, we were asked them to look at some additional, that some of the units to have, basically, they all had single-car garages, to look at having some units with double-car garages. And they have made the change there to basically the end units on each set of buildings are, do have, are a little bit wider and have those two-car garages as a part of the units. I believe that's really the primary change from what you looked at last month. In the overall numbers, as far as number of units and the layout and everything else is essentially the same as you looked at last month. I believe that's all that I've got.
Okay. Questions for Kevin or staff? Matt, are you here? I want to recognize you and let you talk us through the changes that we requested and what's been done in that respect.
This is Matt Taylor of SEC 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. At the plant commission's request, we did go back and reevaluate. We did add two-car garages on all the end units inside the development. And then we also took a harder look at the design and was able to get a 35-foot driveway in front of all of the units, so we can park four cars outside the garage of all the units. So those were the two main changes. Anything else was just kind of pushing and pulling to accommodate those changes. We did not take away any amenities. Open space stayed basically the same. Access points stayed basically the same.
And from the pattern book, the exterior finishes stayed the same as far as the elevations go?
Absolutely. My client was able to incorporate a, I would call it a carriage-style door to help break up that two-car garage, so, you know, make it still appear to be maybe a single car. Still very attractive.
Okay. Anything else from the commission from Matt while we have him up here?
Matt, I know I was one of the people that asked you to go back and look at these end units to, because it's more conducive to what sits right there next to it, the Papa Grove Townhome Project there. So, thank you guys for listening and going back and
Yes, sir. Our pleasure.
doing some things we asked you to do to make it a better product.
And we did coordinate the auto turn with Fire Department earlier this week, so I think that should be satisfied. We'll continue to work with them through a site plan and everything, for sure.
Hey, Matt, I want to thank you, too.
Yes, sir.
For the double garages on the end. That's, you know, something unique to offer as a variety in that neighborhood, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Matt.
I can't, I did, I did go back and, because they will find the, confirm that the auto turn issue, that's been taken care of as well, so.
Okay, so we're good there.
So we're good there. So we can remove that comment number six there.
Okay. What does that leave us with comment?
Really, just the standard-type comments. And then the issue of, again, we'll have to reevaluate the parking for the church, you know, if this is rezoned and that sort of thing. And we can do that when the site plan comes in for townhomes.
Refresh my memory, is parking for a church determined by square footage of the church or is it?
It's determined by the seating capacity of the Vane Sanctuary Meeting Area.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else? I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve with staff comment.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to our next agenda item, which is the site plan. Spartan Raider Smyrna Hotel, Industrial Boulevard, Lot 9, Colonial Town Park. Owner, developer, Felicitus Debt Fund, Spartan Raider Development Partners LLC.
This is a request that y'all heard last month. Basically, elevations weren't meeting our design due last month, so I'll just give the applicant a bit more time to review and try to back the elevations for the building. They've done so. We received new elevations this month, or sorry, this week, rather, that do appear to meet our designer view now at this time. So just to recap what they have sent us, the elevations show a mixture of brick, stone, glass, glazing, and ephesus. The ephesus is used as the secondary material. They also have a couple of metal accents to go along with that as well. The front and left elevations will have at least 79% primary materials, which are the brick, stone, glass, glazing materials. The right elevation, which would face the school over in Laverne, that does have, that's still Smyrna, actually, up there. Facing the school, at least, it would have at least 66% brick and stone, 32% ephesus, 2% metal. And then the rear, which does face the industrial park behind this, has 37% brick and stone, 58% ephesus, and 5% metal. So overall, all things considered, it does meet our designer view as far as visible components from public roadways. So with that, we have a couple extra standard comments and staff comments to go through. Staff comments, standard comments, one through five, are all, still remain. And then staff comments. One was more so a standard comment for the re-subdivision plat to be recorded prior to issuance of any permits. The way they have this site design right now doesn't conform the way the plat has the lot subdivided, so just ask them to do some adjustments of those lot lines before getting a permit. Second comment for the building is required to be sprinkled and will require to be reviewed by, and approved by the State Fire Marshal's Office prior to issuance of a building permit. Comment three was about the fire apparatus turnaround that has been done and can be removed. Comment four was regarding the elevations and has been addressed. Comment five was more so a standard comment, asking about a commercial kitchen. And if it, this hotel doesn't utilize a commercial kitchen, then a 15-here gallon grease trap will be required. Comment six has been addressed as well with those revised elevations. They are showing the dumpster elevations to be brick material, so that can be removed. Comment seven was regarding a height, height overlay. They are going to be required to spend a height overlay for this property due to the height of the, height of the hotel being over 40 feet in height. Have talked to the applicant a little bit earlier this week, and they did say they plan on anticipating getting this to y'all for next month's meeting. So we haven't seen it this time, but with that, comments three, four, and six can all be removed. Staff does recommend approval with the remaining comments, and that is pending an approval of the height overlay across from council.
As far as the height overlay, is that determined by the top of the highest floor or is it the floor itself on the top level or where does that come in?
I believe it's occupied space.
The highest, the highest level, the highest elevation of heated and cooled space.
Of heated and cooled?
Yes, like a parapet wall, things like that are exempt under ordinance.
That's what I thought.
Right.
Staff is recommending approval?
Correct. With the remaining comments.
With the remaining comments.
Yep.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I think with staff's recommendation to approve, I'll make the motion that we approve based on the recommendation with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? Tim, you good?
Good.
Okay. Andrew, good?
Okay.
Okay, just want to make sure. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. All those in favor of approving the site plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to new business. The first item is a rezoning request from Sharif Ba'aud, 188 Moore Avenue, rezoning C4 to R3.
Yes, this is a rezoning request. It's on Moore Avenue. It's a couple parcels off of Lowry Street there on Moore Avenue. It's about 24 hundredths of an acre. Currently zoned C4. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C4 and C2. Also, I misswonder, is the PCD behind it there, that's where Woodford Funeral Home is located. The future land use plan would support, actually, a medium-density, single-family. We looked at kind of that getting off of that. But a long-term residential might not be a bad idea, but it is, currently is still zoned C4. And basically, this entire area, basically, we went back all the way to Crescent Avenue. It's been several years ago. As commercial, there's a couple of tracks on Moore Avenue where commercial uses were proposed and are still in use. And so, we looked at our larger area, because there were several tracks that were, where people were considering commercial at that time, and did rezon several tracks to C4 at that time. And so, the, this one actually, as an, as an R3, it is a vacant track of land. It's not, there's nothing on it right now. The applicant does wish to build a house there, and so that's why they requested the rezoning. But from a zoning standpoint, it would make more sense to rezon. If you're going to rezon this to consider a larger area, this would be staff's opinion, because this would have, basically have a residential zoning in the middle of, completely surrounded by commercial, one form or another, at least from a zoning standpoint. Some of those commercial lots are still in use as residential, but they're zoned commercial. So just looking purely at the zoning, it would make more sense, again, to do this, it would make more sense to consider several tracks, basically the entire block there, kind of like what we did when we considered it to commercial several years ago. That's all I've got.
Questions for staff?
Kevin, is that both, both Moore Avenue blocks, are they entirely C4 up and down the street there?
I remember, I remember.
To Crescent Avenue, yes.
Up to Crescent, yeah.
To Crescent Avenue, just the frontage on Moore Avenue.
Right. And really, there's been a couple small business offices that have come in there and done, I don't know that they're all still there or not.
No, at least one of them is. There's an insurance office is one of them, yeah.
With the C2 zone in front of it, C4 beside it, and across the street from it, I agree with you. I don't, strictly from a zoning perspective, I don't know if that makes a good fit to change it back to residential, unless maybe perhaps some of the people that lived along Moore Avenue as, you know, wanted to come back in and take that C4 zone off. Kind of like what we did across from the OmniHut, as I recall. Some people over there started coming back in and getting the rezon.
We have had a few in there, yeah. Something similar to that, like I said, it just would make more sense if, if maybe several homeowners or property owners through there wanted to make sense to go back to residential, kind of considering the whole area, not just this one track.
I guess that's what I'm struggling with, is as far as, you know, oftentimes, we see just the exact opposite. You see a lot of residential and someone wanting to do something commercial in the middle of a residential. And with this, although, you know, I understand the properties around it, that many of them may be a residential use, I just feel like we're, we're just dropping something in a zone that's not contiguous with the surrounding lots there. It's not necessarily maybe that I'm opposed to, you know, something residential being there, but I'd feel more comfortable knowing that this was trending to be an entire residential area. And I guess I'm in agreement with you that if I, if the several lots beside it were residential, then it would make more sense, and I think maybe even to Mark's point. We did have something similar across from the old OmniHut, but as I recall there, there were several residential lots still in there. It was more of a mix. And here, I'm not seeing a mix at all.
And kind of the same result, too. The, those that we referred to up there on the highway never really panned out into commercial businesses. They just came back in and rezoned it back residential. And that may be what, maybe that makes sense for the people over there to come back in and ask for a rezon back to residential. I certainly support it if everybody felt like that was the thing to do on their street right there.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would make sense if you kind of took some of those, you got, what, one, two, three, four, six or five or six houses on either side of the road there, six or seven?
Yeah.
All of them together would make sense, probably.
Kevin, here's a if. If there, if that were to be residentially zoned R3 with the commercial around it, are there stipulation and guidelines for the way that that structure is built so that the residents living there are protected from, say, noise that's, you know, that will go with a commercial zone area?
I mean, we do have some, yeah, we do have some guidelines in the zoning ordinance. There's certain decibel levels you can't exceed from commercial at a property line, you know, residential and commercial adjoining or something like that. Typically, those are, we look at those when we, if you're through a complaint, usually. It's not something we go around measuring, decibel levels or light levels or anything like that. But if we get complaints, you know, we've had them certainly when lights get added to a new, a commercial business has new lights to the back of their building for security purposes, and they're shining right in someone's back window. I think we certainly have had those kind of complaints, and we can look at those things when we get those, certainly.
But that would usually be going in the reverse, right?
Yes.
Rather than a commercial going into it, I mean, a residential going into a commercial zone area.
Right. Yeah, typically, that is, but that is the type of things you get to when you have commercial and residential butting one another, certainly. And so, we do have, there are some things in there, zoning ordinance, to protect, you know, someone in a residential area from those things.
It probably wouldn't be as prevalent with a C4 as it would a C2.
You have the C2 on the one side.
The use on C2 might be a little bit more.
Yeah.
Because it covers all kinds of commercial property, you know, but C4 is a little bit reduced and the lot sizes are smaller typically.
Well, you are going from a pretty hard zoning as far as C2 goes immediately to an R3, so.
Yeah.
From that perspective. I, again, I'll go back to this. This isn't consistent with, as it sits now, it's not consistent with the surrounding zoning, in my opinion. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to deny the request for the rezon with staff comments.
I have a motion to deny based upon, including the staff comments or?
Well, you know, the zoning.
The zoning, okay. Okay. Yeah. You know, I will go ahead and suspend and recognize you real quickly. Go ahead. If you give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Sharif Waad.
Okay.
Yes, I'm the one who, who submit this request.
Okay.
The reason I submitted this request, because like, I have, I have another property on this street as well, 192 Moore Avenue. And I stay there, and I see the whole street is being used as residential area. And all, every single house on those houses, they are used to be like residential so far. First thing, the, the land is too small for putting any, any other building for, to have business on it. Also, like, this, like, I'm trying to, to make the, the street, when, when I put like a nice new construction on it, it will be like, make it nicer.
Okay.
So, and also, the third thing, I don't know, I'm not like, I know, I don't know what you know, of course, but like, maybe it's not going to affect anything right there if I put a, a house on it.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay.
And you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
We did not.
Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. It sounds like there might be some further discussion here. I have no doubt, sir, that you would probably build a very nice structure there. And what I'm hearing is that it is being used as residential, but also, I think what we're taking into consideration is the surrounding zoning and this not being consistent with the surrounding zoning. Now, that said, Kevin, I'll go back to you. If, if the owners were to come in, some of the other owners were to come in, and they would request that, it would be something that staff may see more consistent and more favorable at that point, correct?
I think so. I think if you had multiple property owners in that area requesting it, we would probably then, even if not all of them did, we would probably then try to maybe initiate some sort of contact with some of the other owners or something like that to see what their thoughts were, just, and it may be at one time, consider doing what we did before and just going back in reverse, you know? I mean, I think that's certainly something we could look.
So it could be potentially, sir, something that maybe you could talk to some of the surrounding property owners to see if they'd be interested.
Are you doing both of my property there or is that not enough?
That's, well, again, I think we're looking at consistency.
Yeah, I think certainly both of his properties would be two of the three, certainly, but there's, or two of the, multiple, more than three. You know, there's three, there's six just on the south side, and one, two, three, seven potentially on the north side. One of those on the, the one on the corner, Moore and Overton, is commercials, in use commercial. So, I mean, I think you would have to have more than just those two, his two, to really consider it.
And wouldn't we want those to be contiguous growing back to Crescent? I mean, we wouldn't want a C4 sitting between two residentials, would we?
Exactly, yeah. I think, yeah.
Okay.
One more question, please?
Sure, I'll allow one more question if you'll come up here.
What about, I'm not sure if that will work or not. What about if I, if I make it C2, which is like?
Your lot's not big enough for C2 there.
Yeah, you have to have at least 20,000 square feet, so that's why I see, those lots are C4 and not C2 partially, because in that area, plus the, the lot sizes are not large enough.
So it's too small for C2?
Right.
That's correct.
You have to have at least 20,000 square feet, and you got just a little over 10,000.
And how many owner exactly you need to approve going to residential?
I think at least.
I think what we're looking for is a.
Yeah.
How many?
Something contiguous there.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know how many owners there are. There's 13 or so lots, but there's maybe not be 13 owners. I would see you on two of them, so I think you need to get it to a, at least a majority of the parcels are being requested in that area.
Okay. Sir, what I would encourage you to do is, I'm not, you know, we've got a motion and a second. We'll vote here in a moment, but what I would encourage you to do would be to contact Kevin and the staff and talk, talk through it a bit more. And, you know, Kevin could certainly talk to you about staff's thought as far as what we would need to do going forward. You know, it, it needs to be contiguous, and there needs to be a majority of it, is what I'm hearing, to make a change. I hate to use the word spot zoning, because I'm not sure there's such a thing as spot zoning, but it's almost like you're, you're dropping a square peg. You're trying to drop it into a round hole here with what's there. And I think you, we need to make this look a lot more of the same here. And, but what's in front of us tonight, and we're, what we're looking at tonight, in my opinion, doesn't get us there, okay?
So, one other thing, what would stop him, though, from building something that is used as a C4 use? Nothing, right? It's already zoned that way. So that's another option, because your lot size is 10,000 square feet. So if you wanted to build it as a small business structure, you're already zoned for that, and it fits all the zoning that's in and around it.
Right.
But if you're trying to go residential, none of that exists on that street right now, and that's our issue. It's the zoning part of it. So that's just another thought for you.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny this request. Any further All those in favor of denying this request signify by saying aye. All those in favor of denying this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Our next item is Frank Malowski, President's Place, Isabella Lane, rezoning C2 to PCD.
Yeah, this is a request, it's a, at the corner of Isabella Lane and President Place. It's a little over seven tenths of an acre of, of property, currently is on C2, all the surrounding zoning is C2. You do have, on the southern portion of the property across the street where there is the PUD that is, there's the storage units and then just recently approved the Champies there, should be across the street there in that PUD. The, the future landage plan, similar to the last request along San, so there is the San Riddick corridor area, which again, would, would support a combination of retail and service uses for local and regional in scale. Major thoroughfare plan does show both Isabella Lane and President Place as collectors and adequate right of way does exist for both of those streets. This proposed PCD is for a quick service oil and lube business. Building is just under 3,000 square feet is what is proposed. And as a part of this PCD, the developer is requesting a couple of variances. One, they're requesting a building setback along Isabella Lane of 10 feet and along the side property line, which would, would be the opposite side from Isabella Lane of five feet. And then, they're also requesting approval of a sign package. Their original request was for 242 square feet, they have amended that, they're actually requesting for 260 square feet total of signage, which 200 square feet would be what is allowed there, so it's about 60 square foot over what's currently allowed. We, staff has looked at this quite a bit and, and pretty closely. Primarily, I guess the primary concern we had was traffic flow and stacking of vehicles. Their original submittal had an access, two access points, both along the adjacent track of land to the west, there's a private access drive there. We talked with them about, do you have rights to that, to access that because it is a separate track of land and it is a private street, private drive? And they then kind of pivoted to accessing Isabella Lane in two locations, which is what is in front of you tonight. Kind of one, south of the building, which would be the primary entrance, and then one on the north side of the building, which would be the primary exit because the, their traffic flow would, would be south to north through the building and, and out, with some parking on the front side for other employees and that sort of thing. Comment six, I said all that to get to comment six. Staff, we did recommend removal of that northernmost access to Isabella Lane. We're concerned with the proximity of that access to the intersection there with President Place. An alternative we did would be to, again, consider and look at accessing that private drive through the west. And as a second alternative would be for basically flipping the traffic flow and, and having the entrance, or basically going north to south with the flow through the building. And so that the, you would only have, primarily, you would have people entering that drive, not necessarily exiting that drive because then they would exit out of the south side for the most part, other than maybe their employees. I think our preferred alternative would be for them to try to work out some sort of access to that private drive through the west, just because of the conflicts there at that, it's a very busy intersection. The other thing we looked at and, and do have a little bit of concern about is, is how many vehicles can you stack on the property as far as, it's a four bay store, so, as long as all four bays are open, that's, you can accommodate four in the building, but how many can you stack out? And looking at it, you could probably easily do two per lane, probably on that site as it's drawn now, which would get you to potentially 12 vehicles. That's just my, just looking at it and taking some measurements, that's not, there's not been any kind of real study from a, having laid out vehicles on it or anything like that, but, so that was, that was the other issue that we looked at. The only real way to, really in either direction, to add any vehicle stacking would be to move that southernmost access further south and then you could, and then keep the traffic flow going the way they have it now, you could, you could potentially add some more stacking there. It does get narrower and eventually becomes a, to a point as you go south along Isabella there, but at some point, the lot's too narrow to do anything with it at all. But you might could have a single lane or a double lane with, as far as, for some distance further south than what they have now. So, they do have their access on that southernmost access is lined up with the existing access that goes into the Home Depot, so that, that makes a lot of sense from, from an access standpoint, so, but there is nothing else. That future development there at Champies had no additional access points to Isabella, they're using the two existing access points, so you wouldn't be conflicting with anything, any other driveways on the other side if we added the, or moved the access further From a building standpoint, you know, there, it beats design review, all those things, that's not an issue at all. Adding a sidewalk along Isabella, like they're required to do, all those things. Truly, the, the traffic flow and then the two, the setback issues and the sign ordinance waivers are, all those are other things that we, obviously, planning commission needs to talk about, see how you feel about those, but, and they're here certainly if they have any questions, so then they could certainly maybe answer some questions that I can't, so, that's what I got.
I, I guess the, I guess an observation, you know, first to begin with is, is that we've, I've seen this lot for 16 years, 20 years?
No, wow.
And it's, it's a challenging piece of property, so it's good to see that we have someone coming in to potentially do something here because I, I think it improves the overall appearance of, of the area in and of itself. So, from that perspective, you know, it's, it's good to see that we've had something brought to us. And I know that it's, you know, when you look at it, you can just tell this is a challenging lot. So, I don't know if, if you want Charles to speak to this or what, but you know, as far as the, the proposed exit that, that we're looking at right now, what distance are we approximately from the intersection and where do we really need to be from that perspective as far as the opinion goes?
Chairman, yeah, on that, like I said, that exit currently is laying like 60 to 80 feet, we would like to have 150 back from the intersection because you do have the left turn lane coming off Isabella onto President's Place, so there would be a conflict with that traffic coming out of there and getting across that left turn lane, especially if you have any stacking there, that it would be a problem for that, so. But I think, like I said, if they want to keep the traffic moving from south to north going through the building, like I said, do away with that exit onto Isabella and have it come out onto the private road over there and that, because it is a better grade there. Anything further down gets into too steep a grade, but if they could do that, that would be our preferred. If they would like to switch traffic, like Kevin was saying, where you came in, it would be mainly right in traffic or traffic turning left into it from a left turn lane, so the traffic there would be a safe movement. And the only exit traffic you would have coming out of there would premise be the employee traffic coming out, so that would be minor throughout the day. And then have all the traffic exit at the south where you could have a much more site distance and less stacking of traffic.
So, with the, are you saying then, if, if we were to consider, or they were to consider switching and going from south to north, go north to south, are you saying that the entry port, entry point could remain the same?
Yes, because you'd be mainly, like I said, a right turn in and you have a four-way stop there, so it's not like you're going to have pre-flow traffic through there and one car stopping and stopping a whole line of traffic. You would have that brake with that four-way stop there, so, we would be more comfortable with it. I prefer not to have it at all there, I'd rather have option one going to the private drive and exiting over there and not have that, but if they cannot get that access connection there, then we would consider leaving that and reversing the traffic flow.
And maybe moving the building down a little bit more for queuing and stacking. So, that option would actually involve obtaining of an easement on the adjac, to the, from the adjacent property owner, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's something that they've attempted or if that's possible, so that's why we're kind of giving them the two different options that we see that would be workable.
Kevin, anything about, anything else for Charles while he's up here? You may be coming back, Charles.
Yes, sir.
Don't go anywhere.
I'll be here.
All right. Kevin, if it were reversed, I'm, I'm looking at the building envelope here to move the, if, if the building were to move, be moved more to the south, there's not a lot of room to move it unless the, the building itself were reduced somewhere, is that?
Yeah, you, you really don't have a, you can move it some, but it would be tough to move it very far south at its, at a four bay width building. I mean, if you went to three or something, obviously, you could, you could move it further south, but the lot gets narrower, not very far south from where it's sitting right now, so, it just would make it difficult to do, to move it that much further south. That would be good, further south is, you could go, just because if you, if you do have the entrance on the north side of the building, obviously, you, you probably, quite frankly, at least as it's laid out currently, you probably can stack fewer cars on the north side than you can, because they're not looking to stack cars there, they're looking to park their employees and people pull out and leave. So, you know, you could, you're probably one car deep.
I was going to say, realistically, how far would you have to move that building to add it, one more vehicle in each lane to stack?
Probably 15 to 20 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure you. Okay. Other questions for staff?
Not a question, just maybe a thought. Is there any particular reason other than just business related that it has to be four bays for them?
I think they'd have to speak to that.
Yeah, I, I don't know either, but I look at the building envelope here and it, it's right on that line, it's right on that setback line. So, they've got it in there, it's tied as they can get it in there. I'm just wondering if four bays also reduces some of the stacking concerns or does it increase the stacking concerns?
Good question. I tell you what, we're probably at a point, unless Kevin, you want to respond to that?
I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, if you reduce the number of bays, you can.
Longer lines waiting.
You may have a longer lines waiting, yeah, because you have one less. Assuming all four are active and being used, you know, you would obviously, you could accommodate three, at least as it's laid out here, you could accommodate three more vehicles with having that fourth bay, you know, so.
Okay. Do we have someone here representing, if you'd come up and give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, it's, uh.
Let's do that, there's the microphone there.
Sure, sure. Sorry.
You're good.
Frank Malowski, Seven Multi-Site Solutions, 3025 Highland Parkway, Suite 850, Downers Grove, Illinois.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. So, I understand the concerns of this lot, this challenging lot here. To, to better explain the Jiffy Lube order of operations here, it is true that the four bay provides, you know, the most efficiency to reduce the amount of stacking. So, the way that the four bay is, is designed in their program is you have four, four vehicles in the bay at peak, you have two rows of stacking, which is typically what we designed for, so that is accurate, so you already have eight outside, four inside, and then you have an additional four for staging when the customers leave the service bays in the front of the pro, you know, whether it's exiting the lobby, paying their services and exiting. Parking is primarily used for employees, so that technically, like, like the way that Isabella Lane runs, most of the action is actually going to happen at the south portion of the site because that's how customers enter to, 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 to get service for an oil change. They don't necessarily go out at the front there, park their car, get their service and come back around. So, that's why we designed it in that fashion. Also, that teardrop shape of the site, it actually benefits the stacking, so you have the, the two rows of stacking and if you happen to have two additional cars back there, you know, it's not a full four cars, but that, that is not what we designed to, we don't design for six car stacking typically on a four bay, not six cars, sorry, 10 car stacking in the back. Yeah, that's not. And, and the other reason why the drive can't be moved further back is because we were designing the site for the trash enclosure, so, so we did our truck turns to make sure the trash pickup can function back there, and that's why that drive is where it's located at in the southern portion of the parcel.
Is there, if, you know, staff is, is recommending that vehicles enter on the northernmost and exit on the southern because of concerns to the intersection there, so i- is that something that's a consideration that, that you could do? And if so, are we okay from a stacking perspective? Would we still be able to achieve what, what you're talking about?
That would be difficult because the way that Jiffy Lube's operations work is the exit is typically the front. We wouldn't want a bunch of cars stacked at the entry when you're driving by the property in that order, it's better if it goes in through the back because that would be where the stacking and congestion is. It would almost be like a McDonald's would have stacking in the front of the property versus around the back. Just, their operations function in that way the best and then it's just an exit only, you know, it's an exit, you're exiting that facility, I guess, would be more effective. There wouldn't necessarily be stacking in the front with this layout.
At any given time, the max number of cars that would be exiting the property, if they all finish at the same time, would be four. Is that correct?
That, that sounds accurate, yeah, because there's four bays and if they happen to finish up at the same time.
All at the same time and paid out and they all leave and then the max leaving would be four.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, and I would, I would, I guess, say that individuals leaving an oil change facility, I guess, wouldn't be, you know, everybody's different, so I don't want to speak to individuals, but I don't believe those four would be, they couldn't wait to exit the site, right? They'd be patient to the traffic flow in the area versus entering the site is, is, you know, is a different situation.
Can you speak to the idea of the easement access?
Uh, yeah, we had originally, as mentioned by Kevin, we had, we had originally had access on that side of the property, but when we found out there was a requirement for easement and it's actually not a public road, it's a private drive, yeah, that created some difficulty to, to pretty much try to save the feasibility of this project and, and the best option was Isabella Lane. I know, I know it's a challenge, you know, it's a challenging site as was discussed and as, you know, we've, we've attempted to design, and that was the best option, combining, you know, jurisdictional requirements, Jiffy Lube operation procedures and just feasibility of. and as, you know, we've, we've attempted to design, and that was the best option, combining, you know, jurisdictional requirements, Jiffy Lube operation procedures, and just feasibility of the site combined in one. That, that was the best layout we could come up with here.
Is there an opportunity, and Charles, this may be more you, is there an opportunity to exit onto President's? Do we, do we get to a point where we're getting closer to that 150 feet that you're asking for?
I don't know if you went straight back out, you'd have two drives fairly close together, you'd have that private drive into the shopping center there, and if you moved their drive as far as you could to their property line, it would be closer, but then, like I say, I think the two drives that you would have competing lefts there, that you would have people getting in that left turn, because you also have a lot of stacking there in that exit. I think you'd probably have more stacking there, maybe on Isabella or as much. So, I think it'd be the same, but then throwing in that extra driveway, people trying to make a left into there, that you would have conflicting traffic. But like I said, as the site is now, and from the south, you have the extra stacking room for the business. It's just, if we could just get that exit onto the private instead of Isabella would work perfect for us.
Okay.
Charles, how far back is Dunkin' Donuts from the highway? Roughly, what would you guess?
I don't know, it may, you're not, well, you have the extra room from the right-of-way from Sam Ridley Inn, so you do have that extra right-of-way space. It would probably be in that neighborhood, something like that.
I know that's been a little difficult right there, that one.
Well, that is because you have the left turn signal or the through, and you get that whole, you know, column of traffic coming through at one time, and you have one stop that will.
This, this breaks up a lot better than that.
This would break up better with the four-way stop, that you wouldn't have everyone coming through in a solid column.
Well, that's the reason I was asking the question primarily.
Right.
Because it works, but it gets a little backed up over there sometimes.
Right. This is, this is just gonna be your peak hours, morning, lunch, and in the evenings it's gonna be your biggest, that's what we're seeing now on Isabella when it hits Sam Ridley, so that's gonna be your biggest time that you're gonna have there, and it may be the busiest time for their business also. It's not gonna be as many cars out, but there's just gonna be that conflict of somebody trying to get across, and then you have cars, are they turning in that left turn lane or not? You're gonna think that they're staying in the right, and as you pull out to get in that left turn lane, they're coming for that same space. That's, that's our concern.
So could you do like Dunkin' did?
Right in, right out?
Mm-hmm.
You could, it will be, you'd have to really put something of concrete barrier.
Yeah, because the one at Dunkin's is not working.
Uh, it would have to be substantial.
They're hopping that one.
But if you made that a right in, right out, people could go back in, and then they'd probably wind up cutting through the Home Depot, but that's.
Yeah.
That would be very congestive. I'd also hate to try to force traffic back through there.
From a design perspective, is there any way to drop, drop that northern exit down any at all, or is it just get too tight?
Uh, probably, I think it'd just get too tight, because I don't think you could move it down without it having a bad curve through it to get it back out. It would be pretty, if I don't see how they could get it pushed back down any further. But, yeah, if you go in.
Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, that's, that's one of the difficult points of the, of the site, too, is because we're proposing that sidewalk all along that area, and that's where I believe it's the 10-foot setback that we're kind of asking the variance for, because we're trying to creep that building as, as far back as we can, allowing for landscaping, and I'm sure our engineers took a look at grading and, and other kinds of issues to try to get that as close as possible. You know, as up as possible, so we, we don't request too crazy of a variance, but also as low as possible to help the circulation, because that's number one priority, obviously, is what we're all discussing here, is the circulation around this site.
Being, being a little creative here, and I, when you said designers, is there a possibility where there could be a modification of the, I guess that would be supplies and office on the right-hand side that allows the whole building to shift down, to move that driveway further down south?
And what could, I'd have to see it visually.
Well, if, I, I see where, I think I see where Andrew's going.
Flip the building is what he's saying.
Either.
Pull it down, but then it gets into your stacking space.
Or, or make, or make that building, I know you want to maintain your square footage and whatever you're doing inside of it, but change the way it's shaped where it's maybe longer, where it can slide, where the whole thing can slide down, and your driveway can slide down. Is it, is it possible to move that building?
So you're just saying, like, if it was, looking at it as a giant T?
Keep the bays the same?
Keep the bays the same, but.
It's that way you're stacking and everything works?
Uh-huh.
But your building that you're doing office supplies, or you're maintaining whatever, change the way that is designed, where your driveway, where the cars are exiting, can shift down to satisfy, what, the 100 feet?
Well, whatever staff would recommend.
Well, it's like 150, but that's something we could look at more.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to help Andrew, because I, I think what he's saying is, you know, if you look at, if you look at the building, you've got kind of a sideways T, and I think what he's saying is, if that were straight, so you had just a rectangular building, would there be the potential of moving it down further at that point, or, and maybe even moving it around so that, you know, we can address the drive issue there? I, I think what he's talking about is, and I see the point, and I think it's a valid point about the four bay, if, and I have no idea how many square feet I'm looking at here in that area.
Well, as far as the building?
Well, you know.
The building's just under 3,000 total.
Yeah, and, and I guess what I'm saying is, if there were some modifications to the building, whether you made it just even or straight across from the bays, in other words, you, you lost a little bit of the portion of that, and, and maybe even come in a little bit to move it, to move it in such a way that we can make this work. I guess, that makes no sense.
I mean, yeah, modifying the, the shape of the building, the layout of the building, so that it, you can move it a little easier, move it around a little more. I mean, that's really, I don't, I can't speak to what, what their operations are, and what they, you know, they've, they've, I'm sure they've come up with, this building is, is probably one they've built several times, and, and works for them from their, from their operations, you know, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be, I mean, I can't speak to that.
Right.
I think it could be modified some, and you can move bathrooms around or whatever, and, and maybe make things work, so.
I just want to make sure the applicant understands that all this discussion's actually an intention of trying to help you, right?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
I, I mean, we're, we're trying to help you solve the problem, and, and then I guess while I'm speaking, I'll ask the counselor, since, since we have four right now, so what's the, to get a favorable vote, will that be, what, three out of four?
Three, yeah.
Okay.
Majority.
What are your thoughts on what we're discussing?
I was gonna ask for permission, so thank you.
Sure.
Uh, so, you would only pick up six feet, moving that drive down, I think approximately six feet. If that's amicable to create a safer situation, you know, I would take that back to our client review, see if the prototype, you know, that layout can change operationally to see if it could work, and, you know, we could bring it back if that's, if, if that is pretty much a requirement, like the additional six feet, if that changes it enough to, to make it happen, or is it still kind of an issue with the six feet, right? Is it still kind of the same scenario?
Then, then you're pulling six feet down into your stacking area.
Uh.
Are you?
We pull six feet down and request probably like an eight-foot setback or a seven-foot setback on that side, right? So as you're pulling that shape down, it's getting closer to the sidewalk, the corner of the building, right?
Where's the most of your stacking space? Is it north or south of the, of the building?
South of the building.
For sure?
Yes, yes, south of the building.
I'm thinking you have to move it, the building 15 feet to make it.
To do anything?
To do anything meaningful as far as that, the way they want the traffic flow to go now.
And I, I like what Tim said, everything we're discussing is really to try to help this come to fruition. I feel like staff needs to be involved further for a comfort level, right? Just to see if it can be worked in a way that, or you could, you could defer, I mean, I'm not telling you what to do. But to find a way that we can make, make it fit better. I think the intersection is a little bit of a concern, because it's, it's close to that four-way, but I, I hear what Charles is saying, that, that's where the traffic breaks up, at the four-way. Everybody has to stop, right? I'd like to see you be able to get that in there, make it work. It's a tough piece. That, that's a tough, challenging corner to put anything on, really, unless it's just a square building with some parking around it, but you're looking at stacking and drive-throughs and.
You know, and when you look at it from a design, like, as it sits right now, of course, from an engineering perspective, in my opinion, the path of least resistance would be if you guys actually had an easement onto that property. Absent that, then, you know, what we're trying to do is figure out a way to make this work.
Yeah.
And that's, I think that's where we're coming from, and, and I'm, I'm thinking that would be something with the engineers and staff, to see if, if we can get something put together here that makes sense, if that's not a possibility, in which I'm understanding it probably isn't, and I don't know that, just kind of basing on what, what you're saying here.
Just using common sense, and, and I, I live on this side of town, I'm at that intersection a lot.
That's tough.
This is a very poor condition, trying to pull out, as this is shown, based on the turn lanes, the volume of traffic, especially during peak times, that's just gonna add extra difficulty and possible safety or confusion, however you want to frame that. So, for me, it's gonna have to be notably different to make sure that that's a safe intersection in surrounding area, other than where it is right now. And, and I'm like these guys, I want to approve it, but it's gonna have to be notably different on where we're exiting.
Yes, and I understand the concern. My only, I guess my only comment would be, any future development on this parcel would have to work with that private drive to be feasible, because I guess my only counter to that is, if you look at other uses of buildings, like if you look at a restaurant or Dunkin' Donuts, or, you know, and any other type of, I guess, more of a restaurant kind of drive-through, you're looking at much more traffic at that intersection versus a Jiffy Lube, which is, I believe, it's 18 per the ITE standards per day on average, and we could provide that to the staff. But I understand the concern as well, too, right? It's the balance of making this type of site work versus safety. Safety is a big concern, too, of course.
Based on what you hear from us, how do you feel about all that? I mean, what would be your wishes at this point? I mean, I know what your wishes are, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah, aside that, that part of what my wishes are, of course, I guess I would have to understand picking up the six, you know, I like that comment that was mentioned by Andrew about jogging the, the bay down six feet. It's just, will six feet create enough of a distance, or are we looking at maximizing the safety of the site, to your point, Tim?
You said six feet.
Approximately six feet, yeah, approximately six feet.
I said move down so that we meet the requirements of traffic flow for that intersection. So, that space that, what we have here, we're showing a B, that's a little triangle. Once again, this is all based on your operations, which I understand is taking place on the outside as well as the inside of the building. That triangle below is space, if that could be utilized to shift your whole building down and then move your drive down, I don't, maybe that's enough space to move the drive? You'd have to, you know, work with traffic study to figure that out, but, and your designers, but I'm seeing that just triangle of space that could be used as operation, if it would work.
Mm-hmm.
So unfortunately, through our discussion. We have yet to redesign this for you today.
We sure have tried.
We sure have tried, but, and I know we haven't called for a vote yet, but honestly, I think, I think we need to go back to the drawing board and get the engineers to look at it again, understanding our concerns, and let's see, is there some other option maybe we haven't thought of this evening?
So the, I guess, the option would be to table this discussion, right, for now, work on, work with the, the team here and find an amicable kind of middle ground, because I know our drive is about 75 off, so if we could get like as much as possible distancing that drive and, and then come back to the board, that would probably be preferential for everybody, right, to see if we could work on it some more.
No pun intended, we're probably at a crossroads at this point, you know, as far as the discussion goes, unless we can get Matt to come up here and help us engineer this real quick, but.
He's gonna do his thing.
Yeah. You know, I, I think from, from our perspective, you know, it would be to hear if someone, you know, makes a motion to approve it, if someone makes a motion to die it, and certainly if you thought there were an opportunity to maybe work on this a little more with staff, we can make a motion to defer it, you know, you could do it for 30 days or, or whatever you think.
The deferment is just for 30, correct?
Yeah, the deferment's for 30.
Typically, yeah, unless you specify something different.
So it's either defer, withdraw, and then come back. Withdraw, you're not under time crunch.
Okay.
But a deferral, be 30 days.
So if, if you think you can get it done within the 30 days, then of course that would be the way to go.
It would pretty much be the next month's meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that would be the preference. Additional question would be the signage, would we want to talk about that now, or?
We will definitely want to talk about the signage as well.
Okay.
So that's a function of, let's, the chairman can make that call, we'll leave it on him.
I can just tell you that.
Ask Champies.
Yeah. We're, we're very, you know, we're very strict, and as far as signage goes, and, and 200 square feet is what is allowable, and I would not expect a variation from that whatsoever. It's, it's something that we're trying to achieve as far as the, you know, just the overall appearance of the town, and certainly this corridor on Sam Ridley, so I don't see that being flexible at all.
Okay, e- even if we're, because the only reason I, the only argument I would have, I guess, would be Isabella Lane, the Home Depot, there's visibility on that side, there's visibility on both traffic, both lanes of traffic on President's Place as well, but, you know, if it's a hard 200, I understand completely.
I guess I would say see Champies for.
Okay, we'll take a look.
I think he just gave you a good hint.
That's good, thank you.
I'd like to see you get it worked out.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I mean, that's, I think, and I hope you come away from, from us, from the commission, seeing that. We would, we would like to see this developed here, it's just making it work for you and making it work for the town.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of what we do, we, we base a lot of what we talk about and discuss on what the staff recommends. So I know they're uncomfortable with it as the way it's laid out right now, so if you can work with the, our team of people here, with your, your people, and come up with a solution, I think you'd probably see us feel better about it as well. I mean, it's just.
I appreciate the discussion as well.
Do you want us to do something different than vote? Do you want to defer, withdraw, or do you want us to?
Uh, defer for 30, 30 days.
That's your request?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a request from the applicant to defer for 30 days. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for a deferral for 30 days.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to defer for 30 days, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're deferred.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item under rezoning request is from Peter Gay Taylor, one zero two five nine Old Nashville Highway, rezoning C four to P R D. And Kevin, we've seen this before.
Yes, this is one, or this property is one you've seen before. This is a little bit modified, the request has been modified from what you had looked at before. But it is four point three eight acres, currently is on C four. Stranding zoning is a mix of C two, C four, R one, and the Lennox PUD. This is an Old Nashville corridor character area, which would support a mix of the neighborhood retail and personal services, as well as townhomes and attached residential for this area. Major thoroughfare plan does show Old Nashville Highway as a minor arterial and adequate roadway does exist for that street. The request to P R D is for forty-six townhomes, ranging in size from sixteen hundred to two thousand square feet. That is a little change from what you looked at before. But it was forty townhomes at eighteen to twenty-two hundred before. And then the rest of our comments we have on our sheet are really all from Salta Utility District. They do have adequate fire flow here in this area. This was looked at by planning commission, the planning commission did recommend approval previously. The council did turn the request down primarily, the primary concern raised at the council meeting was parking. And so this request does increase the parking. Each unit has four, room for four parking spaces in the drive for each unit. In addition, there's about a half space per unit for guests that are kind of scattered around in three or four locations on the property. They are meeting our requirements as far as the open space and that sort of thing. They are, they are changed a little bit, and I'll get to, the units themselves, there are, some of the units are three stories. The previous, where they were all two-story units. And that, basically, they're, to get the added parking, they're, they're going to the third story to keep the square footage similar, to basically make it a smaller footprint, but still the same square footage, or similar square footage in units, so. And they are a mix of the, certainly the materials are all complying with our requirements with regards to designer view as well, as far as exterior materials. The overall layout is, is very similar to what you looked at before, as far as the road layout and all that. So it's not really a big change there. All the units are rear-loaded as far as parking. And so the units will be facing, all the streets are private. But so they'll be either facing the street or facing open space. Or facing directly to Old Nashville Highway, not backing up to Old Nashville Highway and that sort of thing, so. Their representation is here if you have any questions, but that's what we've got.
Okay. Questions for staff? Auto turns, okay? Okay.
Is this completely without garages?
There are no garages, yes.
Is there space for building future garages, or that's not an option in this?
That's not an option, is what they're talking about.
Currently, is there a requirement that townhomes must have a garage?
No.
So we have the thirty-five foot setback?
That's correct. And again, that's from the rear kind of private, there are, but it is thirty-five feet to the, to the building.
And the units on Old Nashville Highway will, will face front elevations to the highway?
To Old Nashville Highway.
To Old Nashville Highway?
Yes.
Okay. Let's do this, is there an engineer or someone here to represent this development? And if you could give us your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Chandler Walker with Catalyst Design Group, we're the engineer of record for this project. We went to council and the mayor was concerned about the amount of parking. And she requested the four, four spaces per unit. And so that is why we have come back to planning, to revise the plan for the amount of parking.
Could you talk me through the units that are three-story, how they are actually laid out?
We have received the revised building footprints this afternoon, and I apologize for not being familiar with the actual layout of the interior. I do know that there'll be three-bedroom and mostly like the living space will be on the bottom floor, I believe. I think there was concern about three stories with elderly, but there would be a bedroom and living quarters probably on the first floor. I'm sorry?
Height of the three-story units?
Uh, we did a maximum of thirty-five feet.
Chief, are we okay with that? Thirty-five feet?
I believe we are, sir.
Okay. Kevin?
I mean, typically, the taller, I think it's thirty, or, I remember if it's thirty feet or thirty-five feet, you do have to have the wider driveway, it's a thirty?
Yeah, it's thirty, yes.
So you have to have, the driveway would need to be twenty-six instead of the typical twenty-two or twenty-four foot, as far as those private drives. She'd have to have a little bit wider, because you have, that's have enough room for the taller truck.
To, to, okay.
Yeah.
And that would be addressed at, at...
Could be addressed at site plans, certainly, but yeah, that's, that's typically what you would, would have for that. If it's, once you get above thirty feet.
Okay.
And so those thirty, the three-story units would be hitting more, most likely, I'm trying to pull up those drawings, I got, I got the same ones at like four oh five this afternoon that she's talking about. But you can, they're still the same general idea as what is this, though. With, where you have a couple of units in each set that are three stories and the rest are two. So.
Okay.
And can't get to, get them to open up, so. But, but again, it's just, I don't think we had the, we didn't have the, I apologize, there's no, there's not any hard copies. I don't think we ever received any hard copies on this one, so we do have the digital copies in your, if you're, on your digital packet. But they, they did have bedrooms on the first floor on all the units, I do recall that. And two and three, most of them actually appear to be three-bedroom units or possibly having a two-bedroom with the third bedroom built as an office, sort of as more of an office instead of a bedroom, but...
Okay.
It could be a flexible space there.
I'd like to look, question there. So for the, are you able to move the slide back to the previous slide? Yeah. So for the units that are on the, let's say that's the southeast, the bottom, right there. So the entry is in the rear, so you will be using, I believe that road is at Lennox Village, right?
Yes, yes, that's an existing street.
So you'll be tying into that?
Yes.
Yeah, ripping that fence out. So for all of the units, they would have to come all the way down and then circle back around in order to get to their respective homes, right?
Either that or come into the Lennox and come in that direction. Yeah, they would have a couple of options.
Yeah, that would end up being the same distance, they would still have to travel.
Yeah, either, either way, yeah.
And there's no street parking, right?
No.
Okay.
I believe we have twenty guest parks scattered throughout the site, too.
Did I see anything, is there a third-party H O A that would be managing the property?
That was, yeah, I believe, I can't remember what page.
They would be managing the common open space and private streets.
Right.
Is that, do we have that, any comments anywhere?
Pretty sure I saw it on, I can't remember which page I saw it on.
We have noted it on our layout plan.
Yeah.
Which is on the digital copy?
Yes.
Which we don't have. Okay. Other questions?
I still see some discussion from our fire safety team, do you need more?
I apologize if I could just ask, did we, because I didn't understand, if we confirmed that the roadway as designed has the twenty-six foot minimum, is that correct, or?
I don't know if it's, if it does or doesn't, I can't, on this, I don't...
That would just be a comment we would request.
Okay, let's make sure that's an added comment.
To ensure that it would allow for the apparatus to operate for a unit that's that tall.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Currently, I think the proposed roads are twenty-two feet, so we can make that adjustment.
Okay.
Is that the road or the driveways?
Well, they're, they're private roads, but it would be the road. The driveway itself would be, you know, eighteen feet or whatever, just for the, the individual unit drives. But it would be those, those three private streets you're talking about.
Okay.
Actually, I'm looking now, they're twenty-four feet, so it'd just be a two-foot difference.
All right. Other questions? Andrew, you good? You have, do you have anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I take it from the commission's perspective, we're, we're good as far as questions and discussion? And if so, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments, plus add the twenty-six foot road.
And the third-party H O A?
And the third-party H O A, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with staff comments, a second. I don't think I'm going to get a second, so this motion's going to fail for a lack of a second. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we'll still have to have a...
We need a motion.
So we're going to have a motion, something?
Have an affirmative motion.
All right, so first motion failed for a lack of a second, so do I have a new motion?
I'll make a motion to deny based on what I've said from the beginning. It's taking the zoning and changing it from C four to P R D.
Okay. I have a motion to deny, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to deny and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of denying signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm a no.
Two?
Two-two.
Two-two.
That's it. Okay, we are now on to preliminary plats. Our first one is Woodmont Phase Nine, Blue Diamond Drive. Owner, developer, Meritage Homes of Tennessee Incorporated.
Okay. Woodmont Phase Nine, preliminary plat. This is sixty-four lots, twenty-six point one-six acres. This kind of extends some of the existing, or the streets that were previously approved in Section Eight, A and B that you all looked at a few months ago. We had several comments, most of them, most of what was left are standard comments. Certainly, we would want to keep comments one through four, comment number five, major thoroughfare plan does show Blue Diamond Drive as a collector, and it's, they are showing adequate roadway there for that street. We did ask them for, against some standard comments, so we want to keep comment six regarding the roadway lighting plan and comment seven regarding their construction plans. There is a proposed easement where they're going to connect to an existing sewer line kind of on the northeast side of the property. They do have to get an easement from an adjacent property owner to get to that existing sewer line. I did receive notification from that property owner that they are working with the developer on that. So we just need, we want to keep that comment, just because we just need that documentation that they are able to obtain that easement, and if that easement does get created, because it would be extended a public sewer line through that area. Comments ten, or not in ten, rather, regarding some critical lots and drainage easements, they're not showing any critical lots, but staff has, there's some, they're fairly steep top on some of these places, they're not meeting the criteria now, but sometimes when the grading happens, they get a little steeper. So at times, as things happen there, so we want to be sure, we'll kind of reserve that regarding critical lots till we see those construction plans, and then also the drainage easements. So we want to keep those two. We did ask number eleven to submit nine-one-one approval for the road names, that has been done, so we can remove that. The hammerhead turnaround does have to be paved, and that is showing to be paved now, so we can remove that comment. And number thirteen, there was an easement shown, we just asked them to provide on each side of the streets, which we wanted to label and to mention that. And so that has been taken care of, so we can remove comment number thirteen. The, comment number fourteen, there's an existing sewer line kind of in Phase Six C, Woodmont there, that they're showing. That was actually shown on Phase Eight A, so they have shown that as, in an easement now. They are modifying that common area, but it's in Phase Six C, they are modifying that boundary. And so the ownership of that common area does need to be included on this plat since they are modifying their property. And they need to show that as part of this plat as well. And so, and then comment number fifteen has been addressed regarding the area shown as common space. So we can remove basically eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and really that first couple of sentences of fourteen, and then remove fifteen. And then staff would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Okay, questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Our next item is Woodmont Phase Ten, Blue Diamond Drive, owner, developer, Meritage Homes of Tennessee Incorporated.
Yeah, this is Phase Ten of Woodmont, this is, it's actually is the last phase of Woodmont. Twenty lots, about thirteen point eight-three acres. This kind of comes, is directly adjacent to and north of the parcel, or the plat you just looked at for Phase Nine. We had, again, several standard comments, one through four, we want to keep all those. Nothing on the major thoroughfare plan is affected by this request, we can remove that. The, against standard comments six and seven regarding the roadway lighting plans and their construction plans, we'd want to keep. And similar comments as we had on the last one regarding the critical lots and drainage easements. So we want to keep those two comments. Comment number ten regarding the temporary turnaround being paved, that is shown now and can be removed. And again, the same comment we had on the last one regarding the easement, and that has been taken care of. So we can remove ten and eleven, so staff would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Consistent with what's previously been submitted?
Yes.
Questions for Kevin or staff? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve?
With staff comments.
With staff comments, do I have a second? Second. 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 I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We're now on to final plats. Our first item is Saddle Grove, 8695 Rocky Fork, Amleville Road. Owner, developer, Ashton Nashville Residential LLC, Ashton Wood Homes.
Yeah, this is the final plat for Saddle Grove. It's 22 lots, 10.98 acres. It's owned to R3. So this, the, we had a few comments. Number 1, major thoroughfare plan does show Rocky Fork, Amleville Road as a collector, and they are dedicating right-of-way for that street. Comment 2 and 3 were standard comments, we will need to keep those. Comment 4, we asked them to show some dimensions. They got some drainage easements that have some odd, they're kind of oddly shaped, as it kind of falls across the property and not necessarily along the property line, and so we asked them to show those dimensions, so we can kind of better pinpoint them in the field if needed. And they've done that, for the most part, I think Lot 16, I think they still need a couple spots to need to do that, so on comment 4, we could basically just keep it for Lot 16. Number 5 regarding the fire hydrants being shown, they have done that. Number 6, there was a drainage easement boundary on Lot 14 that was missing, they've added that, so we can remove comment 5 and 6. And then comments 7 through 13 are all from CUD. There is adequate fire flow here for, at 1,000 gallons per minute here, so that's good. So with those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for staff or any comments for the commission? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Tim. I have a motion to, and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next final plat is Stewart's Glen, 8162 Rocky Fork, Amleville Road. Owner, developer, Patterson Company LLC.
Yeah, this is the final plat for Stewart's Glen. This is 15.25 acres, 21 lots in Stewart's Glen PRD. Similar comment regarding Rocky Fork, Amleville Road, and they are showing right-of-way here to be dedicated for that street. Comment 2 is a standard comment regarding adding signatures and everything, and then the rest of the comments are all CUD for the most part, and they, again, they have adequate fire flow here for the, for residential development. We did ask them, comment number 11, to show the access easement for parcel 50.01, because there's another lot that will be, or an existing parcel line that will be accessing that private road, and so they have shown that, so we can remove comment number 11. And so with those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We're now on to site plans. Our first site plan is Cedar Creek Townhomes Phase 1, Rocky Fork Road. Owner, developer, Alcorn Properties.
This is a site plan, if you all have seen in the past, I believe it was roughly 2019-ish timeframe when this originally came through, shortly after the rezoning of the property to the PUD zoning for it. So this is for the first phase of the development, which does include 38 townhomes. The second phase, which is the northern part of this property, is gonna be 49 townhomes. Total for this development is 87 townhomes. There was a little bit of a shift in the design since the original submittal was done. The, there was a cul-de-sac that continued south, and there was a stream that crossed, and there was part of the environmental study that found an issue with that, so they've revised the layout of it minorly. It's still roughly the same layout, shifted some units around, but still the same overall number of townhomes for the site, so just minor shift in there for that. But overall, site plan did expire back a year after it was approved in 2019, so this is the reason why they're back today, looking to get permits. So the elevations for the, for the site show a mixture of fiber cement board as a secondary material and brick and cultured stone at the base of the buildings. Proposed elevations do meet the approved PRD, and then we have a couple comments to go over. The first comment for signage requiring separate permit, and then two staff comments. We asked them to show a bus stop location for this development, and to provide dimensions on the parking spaces. All those comments do remain, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Question for Mitch?
Primarily, this is just because it expired.
Correct. We're gonna get permits for it.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve, staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item is Range USA Trident Drive. Owner, developer, Swanson Development LP, Compton Addy.
So Range USA is proposing to construct just under a 15,000-square-foot building on Trident Drive. The site is currently zoned C2 and is part of a larger track. The track will need to be subdivided prior to issuance of any building permits. A single access point is proposed off of Trident Drive, and this access drive is to be shared with the adjoining track to the north after the subdivision of it. Vehicular use area for the site is just over 1 acre at 1.03, and, which would require 4,503 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is showing 4,910 square feet, so they're meeting that requirement. Parking required of 60 spaces, they're showing for 95. Handicap space required of 4, and they are showing for 4 as well. Landscape plan shows a variety of shrubs and trees planted throughout the site. Street trees and shrubs are proposed along Trident Drive with additional trees and shrubs and landscape islands at the base of the building. Elevations, we have received, revised elevations on this since the packets to go out last week, so the elevations submitted show a mixture of brick, split-faced CMU block and CMU block. The elevations still do need to be revised to meet elevations. They are really close to meeting our elevations, but they're not there yet. A lot closer than last week when we saw the last elevation, so the elevations, we deem them all sides to be visible from the public right-of-way, so the all, all four sides will need to meet that 75% threshold for the primer materials and 50% for the overall building. So the front elevation has 70% primer materials, east and west elevations have 72%, and then the north, which is the rear, has 91% primary material. So all in all, real close to that 75% threshold. Just need to add a little bit more brick or that primary, primary material of our choice to the building to make it meet our standards. Standard comments 1 through 5, all to remain, and a couple staff, staff comments to go over. Staff comment 1 was regarding the final plat, to subdivide the property before the building permits are issued, so that will remain. Comment 2 was regarding the auto turn that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment 3 was regarding the, separate comment regarding the elevations, showing the material percentages, we can calculate it for our design review. They have done that. Comment 4 is regarding the overall design review aesthetic part of the building, so that, we can remove the first part of the comment regarding the overall percentages. Second part of that is to remain regarding the design review requirement, so I'll just bring those couple percentage points up as far as the primary materials are concerned. So comment 4, first half is removed, second half will remain. Comment 5 is more of an informational comment, that Trident Drive must be bored for a waterline connection. Comment 6 can be removed. There was a discrepancy between the square footage of vehicular use area and the separate pages. That has been addressed. Comment 7 was a fire department comment about the public and private hydrants be within 400 foot of the building. That has been addressed. Then comment 8, there was a labeling error on the overall width of the drive out behind the building, and that has been addressed as well. So comments 2, 3, the first half of 4, 6, 7, and 8 can all be removed, and with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Okay. Questions or comments? Confident that staff can work in finalizing the building exterior so that we meet design review?
Yeah, we're getting approval, it's just not there yet, but it shouldn't take too much.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item is Spine and Orthopedic Solutions, corner of Rock Springs Drive, Jim Parker Drive. Owner, developer, Fishing Day LLC.
So this is a, another site plan for Spine and Orthopedic Solutions. They're proposing a medical facility on a currently vacant tract with, which does have road fringes on both Rock Springs Road and Jim Parker Drive. In its current state, there are two lots. These lots will need to be combined, essentially make one large lot to, before the issuance of a building permit. The medical facility building is to be 15,194 square feet in size and would be positioned near the rear of the site. The front part that's left vacant would be, proposed to be developed at a later date. The site would have two access points. One would be onto Rock Springs Road and one onto Jim Parker Drive, and they did situate those just as they are as far away as possible from the intersection of Jim Parker and Rock Springs Road. Vehicular use area for the site is 1.20 acres, and that does require 5,229 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is showing 0.85 acres of landscaping. Parking required of 51 spaces, and they are showing for 97. And handicap parking spaces of 4, and they are showing for 6, so in all aspects, they're meeting our requirements. Landscape plan shows street tree lining both road fringes. Additional shrubbery is shown with the street trees on Jim Parker Drive, where development is to occur on this parcel. Trees are to be planted in landscape islands around the parking lot, and shrubs are to be planted at the base of the building. There's a little bit of a residential zone, I believe, is along Rock Springs Road. They are showing a type-C buffer along that, between that and the church, so that does meet our landscape requirements for buffers between commercially-zoned properties and residential-yzone properties. Design review, architectural elevations submitted do show a mixture of glass and glazing, sex zone, and hardy board siding. Fiber board cement is listed as a secondary material per our design review, and at least 75% of any facade visible from a public road should be finished in primary materials. At this time, the designer, or the architectural elevations do not meet our design review. We have received a little bit of revised elevation since packets did go out, so I'll go through these, just a brief overview of what they do list. The, all these elevations will be visible from public road, public roads. The west elevation, which is the front, does face Jim Parker Drive, shows 62% primary materials, 38% secondary, and that secondary is comprised of that hardy board. East elevation, the rear, has 27% primary materials, 73% secondary. The north elevation shows 29% primary and 71% secondary materials. And the south elevation, which would be visible at this time until development occurs on that southern track, has 59% primary and 41% secondary materials. So at this time, none of the elevations do meet the design review. The applicant has decided to proceed with these elevations as submitted, and they, I believe, probably like to discuss that a little bit later with y'all, but at this time, this is what we have presented to you, and staying the facts is it does not meet design review as stated, so. Couple standard comments, all to remain, and staff comments. Comment 1 was regarding the combination of those tracks in one parcel, so that will remain. Comment 2 to the submit water construction drawings. Comment 3, we asked them to label materials and show material percentages. They haven't done that part of the comment. The last part of that comment regarding the remaining design review requirements, so first part of comment 3, we removed, the last part regarding the design review remain. Comment 4 regarding the auto turn, there's still a couple issues on the auto turn for the fire department, as far as going over the curbing. They would like to see revised, so comment 4 will remain. Comment 5 kind of goes along with that regarding the fire hydrants, so we asked the applicant to just get with the fire department to come to a conclusion on this. There's plenty of space on the site to meet this requirement, so we just, probably just a little bit of shifting around of some drive aisles, maybe widening them out a little bit to meet this requirement. 6 was regarding dumpster enclosure elevations. We have received that, can be removed. Comment 7 was regarding ADA parking spaces and labeling as such, and they have done that. Can be removed. Comment 8 was more so an informational comment. The, any future access points will be throughout the interior of the site. We're not gonna allow any more access points onto Jim Parker Drive or Rock Springs Road. Comment 9 is a utilities comment, will remain until utilities has a chance to review that, make sure it meets their requirements as far as backflow parameters are concerned. Comment 10, we asked them to show square footage of vehicular use area. They have done so, can be removed. Comment 11, they did show the total square footage of the landscaped area, however, they included the overall grassy area of the undeveloped portion, so we just asked them to revise that to make it more so consistent with what should be designated, so overall, not a big deal on that one. Just asked them to make that minor detail to clarify it a little bit more. Comment 12 was the number of parking spaces for the site to be showed is required by the ordinance. They have done that as well. So first part of comment 3, 6, 7, 10, and 12 can all be removed, and with that, staff would recommend approval, and that does include the revision of the elevations just to be consistent with the design review.
Did I understand that you said somebody wanted to speak to us about that? Okay. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. CJ Merle, 615 Design, 360 Q Creek Circle here in Smyrna. Just to clarify, wanted to, I guess, address the comment about the exterior elevations. As you can see from the renderings, trying to come up with a fairly unique building here. I'll come back to the elevations. Regarding the auto turn, I think that can be easily resolved. I think, I think where it's at, it does look like we're going over the curb, but we are showing curb and gutter in those locations, and it's going over the gutter, but we'll confirm, and I think that can easily be addressed. Coming back to the elevations, though, like I said, trying to come up with a, with a unique-looking building, as you can see, we feel like we've come up with a pretty unique look. I do have the architect here, too, if y'all, if y'all do have questions regarding the elevations, but happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Okay. Any questions?
I think the key point on the elevations is, you know, we, we set a standard to try to have consistency around the community, right? So, and, and everybody tries to make a, a nice-looking structure.
Yep.
Right? But, you know, ultimately, where do you draw the line on what's approved and what's not, what's allowable and what's not? So I think, although I'm not discounting that from the elevation on the photo, it, it doesn't look bad, right? But we really need to follow the standard.
Okay.
And I think, from my perspective, architecture, I think it's a great building. It's beautiful, and I think it'll make a, a nice addition to that area. You know, one of the things that we've really worked on is kind of developing that medical corridor. But that said, and what Tim was speaking to is that we've adopted a standard of design review, and, and I actually think that you can keep the architectural features that you've already incorporated in, increase the amount of primary material, and, and I think it's a home run for both sides here. If you're creative enough to get this far, you can do it.
And I think, I think we're, we're okay with the condition, so.
Okay. That's the only thing.
That's the only thing I would speak to as well, just consistency.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, we've had discussion, we've heard staff comments, and representative for the company speak, anything else that we need to discuss? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve all staff comments and design review being part of that.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Our next agenda item is store place canopy addition, fifty-nine sixteen New Nashville Highway, owner, developer, twenty-one fifty-six Associates.
Yeah, store place, existing facility out there, recently, we've had the new site plan come through for the building in, in the front of the property. This particular plan, they're looking to propose a canopy covering an existing parking area of the rear of the site. In addition to that, they're looking to add some paving out there, which is currently a pervious site, make it impervious and make an additional parking spaces out there in the middle part of the site, so the canopy they're looking at adding out here is about seven thousand five hundred and eighteen square foot in size, eighteen feet tall. Vehicle use area for the site, they're proposing to add an acre for that interior part, that their paving would be an acre exactly in size. That does require three thousand four hundred and eighty-nine square feet of landscaping, and they're showing for three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet. That landscaping they're adding is, site is existing, as far as vegetation is concerned, they're just gonna buff up a little bit of the eastern property line where it's a little bit needed, that's gonna be a mixture of trees and shrubbery in there to meet our requirement for landscaping. The, we didn't receive elevations for this, but the applicant has notified me that they are gonna be, it's gonna be a typical metal canopy out there, which the rest of these buildings, I believe, are metal as well, so remain consistent with what is existing at the site. Standard comments, one through five would all remain, and then comments, comment one was regarding COD's infrastructure being adequate to meet the requirement for this project. Comment two is regarding the square footage of vehicle use area, and they have done so. Comment three was regarding the proposed and required square footage of landscaping, they have done that. Comment four is regarding the construction entrance requirements of two to four inch diameter and eight inches thick, they have done that. And comment five was regarding the signature and stamp to be added to the plans, and they have done that as well. So, comment one, which is more so informational than anything else, but everything else can be removed, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Mitchell, you may have mentioned this, is there any need for any kind of buffer on the backside of this site?
There's existing vegetation back there right now, so they're just adding it where it needed, where it needs it at the site.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Anything else from the commission before we vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's approved. We are now on to agenda item seven A, zoning ordinance amendment, article four, section four point zero one zero, point one, point A, residential parking requirements.
This is a, a zoning ordinance amendment the staff has, has put together regarding off-street parking for residential developments. This will basically change what we require in one and two family and townhome developments. Currently, we require two spaces per unit, and so what this would do would change that to four off-street spaces for one and two family developments as well as townhomes. It would also basically codify, kind of our policy has been that we don't really count garages towards meeting those requirements, this would codify that, and it would also require a half space per unit for townhome developments for guest parking. I did look around at some of our surrounding communities, just so you have that comparison for it, and Murphysboro currently does require four per unit for one and two family, with they, for townhomes, they only require one and a half for one-bedroom units, and then like three for a two-bedroom, four for a three-bedroom. Franklin only requires two per unit, and then kind of graduated one, two, and three-bedrooms type requirements for duplexes or townhomes. Lebanon, their requirement doesn't make any sense to me, one per unit, and then even less for apartments, which makes no sense, but that's what they require according to their zoning ordinance. And then Mount Juliet is similar to Franklin, is drawing two per unit on one and two family and one and a half, kind of a graduated thing, one and a half for one bedrooms and two for two-plus bedrooms, so we would be higher than others on some things, we'd be similar, very, just same as Murphysboro for, for one and two family, but, but, you know, we, we have seen issues, and primarily in, in townhome type developments, and then in single-family developments where we've had the shorter setbacks, which we are trying to hit most of those, we kind of addressed those quite a bit with that thirty-five setback and that sort of thing, but, but this would just basically put this in the ordinance, so it's, it's clear for everybody, developers, engineers, design insights, all that, those kind of things, it's, it's not something that they're, they don't, they can't say we didn't know about it. And we really, I mean, I did clarify one thing on, we say multifamily, three or more, I did clarify that as apartments, for, and keep that at two, we really haven't seen the parking issue in apartment complexes, it's really been more in those, those townhome developments primarily, but also in some of those PUDs that we've had where we had the twenty-foot setbacks, so, anyway, that, that's what this ordinance would, would do, or this ordinance amendment, rather, would do, would just, would really just kind of put in place kind of what we've been administering anyway, but just putting it in place in the ordinance was clear for everybody, so.
And, you know, I think what we're trying to achieve here is to make sure that we have a, a good traffic flow in the neighborhoods, we don't have vehicles on the street that would impede our emergency vehicles, you know, just from a safety aspect and from the ability just to move within a subdivision, I think that's what we're trying to achieve
Kevin, one of the things I've noticed, and, and thank you for compiling each municipality's information, it's helpful, one of the things I've noticed is there's no, there's nothing in any of those that speak to our senior style living, and I'm one that's always tried to encourage development to, to look at bringing senior fifty-five and up restricted living, and when I say restricted, I mean it must be not targeted, but restricted, and being that, I think it encourages developers, if we have some leniency on the fifty-five plus, to actually develop fifty-five plus, because their density is a little smaller perhaps than what we're requiring or potentially codifying going forward.
And we do have, and I didn't include that in my information to you, and I apologize for that, I did, we do have that, if it is fifty-five and up, we do require less parking. I didn't include that in here, I didn't propose changing that.
I would kind of like to see that not apply to this codification.
Yeah, and it wouldn't.
Because I think if we can encourage more fifty-five plus restricted living for our seniors, to me, it just makes sense to encourage development to do it.
Yeah, and we have that on, if you look, on the right-hand side, it has our, on the very, toward the back, if it's, if it's primarily for persons over actually sixty, we, we may want to look at that changing to fifty-five, that's what the state law is, but we only require one space per unit, but we do require that they have room on their site to accommodate one and a half per unit, in case there becomes an issue, they have room, they can add some parking. And some of the other, I can't remember.
Well, could you?
Cause Mount Juliet or somebody had a very similar requirement there, and so I think we do have that, I think, so.
Well, when you say one per unit, we've been requiring double-wide driveways anyway, right? So, that allows two.
Two.
Plus garage space, if it allows.
If it has a garage, so. So, I mean, I think, I think, yeah, and this would be, yeah, if it's a completely fifty-five and up development, I think we, we wouldn't have this requirement, the four per unit, I think.
I think it makes sense, because it encourages it to be more of it.
Right.
Yeah.
And you typically don't have as much, many people parking in the.
There you go.
Yeah, you typically are having, anytime, so you only have one car anyway.
Hopefully, at that age, you're not anticipating any teenage drivers or anything, ready to send them on their way.
Chief, did you have anything? Did you have anything, chief?
Sir?
Did you have anything on, comment on that?
No, sir.
I didn't think so. Okay, so we, we need a motion as far as.
To recommend.
To recommend this to the council or not, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion in addition to the senior housing removal of this codification. You probably know what I mean, don't you, counsel?
Yes.
I do.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion to approve with the removal of the senior.
Keeping it separate.
Keeping it separate from this.
Keeping it separate.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second.
I got a second, a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this, this motion is approved. We are now on to a mandatory referral, town of Smyrna, the summit land sale, Sam Ridley Parkway West.
Yeah, this is a, a recommendation from, from, coming from staff, town has owned this property for over forty years, and through the years, we have donated some of it to Motlow State Community College, or to the state for development as Motlow State Community College, and the remaining acreage has been marketed for quite some time, there's now potential buyer for the property, and so the planning commission is required to review any sale of land and find that whether or not, keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan, make a recommendation to the council. Staff would recommend approval, the map in your packet does show the entire parcel, but it is actually, the one that's on the screen there is actually what you're looking at, there's, there is a, we're kind of reserving some, some of it for potentially, if needed in the future by Motlow, we'd keep that out for them, so, but the remaining roughly forty to forty-one acres would be, be potentially be available for sale, so. So, again, staff would recommend this to you.
Okay, questions for Kevin on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to make this recommendation to council.
Motion to recommend to council with staff comments.
I have a motion to recommend this, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recommendation is approved. Are we ready for the August bond report?
We are.
Wow, okay.
Several this month, first one, Rookers Bend, this is one that's, it's getting a little age on it, they are getting ready to start their next phase, and, and the last time, I didn't talk to Mr. Johnson this time, the last time I talked with him, his plan was to finish this phase as a part of starting the next phase, so we, I am recommending a six-month extension on that one to hopefully get that finished up. Cedar Hills, section two, phase two, this is when we've had a couple years now, the are getting close to finish there, and they did, they did anticipate having, kind of putting the topping down and everything in, within the next couple of weeks, and so if they're able to do that by the expiration date, which is August twenty-first, we would recommend reduction of that to ten thousand to start their maintenance period, otherwise we would need to extend it six months. Buckingham Hills, this one is, is, there, there's a ditch, I guess, they gotta get redone and some other things, we, we would recommend a six-month extension on this one, but this is another one that's starting to get a little bit of age on it, so hopefully they'll get that finished up within the next six months. The next one, the Smyrna Industrial Park, reset of lot six, this is the end of the maintenance period on that one, there's nothing to repair there, so we can release that one, so at least we're getting rid of one. Westover, phase one B, this is only about half-built out, we've only had this one for one year, so we would recommend a one-year extension on that one. Blakeney, section two, phase three, and section two, phase two, those are the next two, and we've only had those one year, would recommend a one-year extension on those. And then Preserve at Stewart Creek, section three, this is the end of their maintenance period, there's a few things to clean up there, they did ask for the punch list, I did go ahead and send them that, so they've had that already, and they are hoping to get everything done, and that, and if they're able to do that by September tenth, we can release that one, otherwise we would need to extend it, but they're usually pretty good about finishing things up, so hopefully we can release that one. And then Sundale, section two, it's about, it's over sixty percent built out, we've only had that one a year, would recommend a one-year extension on that one, and that's
First couple of these that were a hundred percent built out, and we've had for a while, we're, we're in prime time season to pave and finish this up.
Yeah, and I'm, and that's what I've, I've encouraged these folks to do, because it is time to finish up on some of these.
My patience getting a little thin here.
Yeah, I understand.
On those especially, so, do we, I know we've had this discussion before, you make a phone call, they don't respond, are we sending out a, a letter?
Yes, and they'll get the letter, the ones that have, are, have a letter of credit from a bank, the, the bank gets the letter as well, some of these are escrow accounts that we, probably give us a check and we deposit it into the escrow, so.
Okay. All right. We've heard the bond review report, do I have a motion?
So moved. To approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bond review report is approved. Other business?
Have anything else?
Counselor, you good?
Anything for me?
Okay. Anything from the commission? We stand adjourned.
All right.
I sent you an email, so you got.